I think some of the frustration expressed tonight could be remedied if we had better communication between the city government and the population. If we had better lines and means of communicating between the city government, the population, and including the sewer district and the population. The way in which that proposal was presented to the public inherently created an environment where there would be a sense of distrust. Before you can present to the public, any public, not just in East Cleveland, but anywhere, any kind of, any kind of report that deals with such highly technical information, the population needs at least a base amount of knowledge to process that information. That should be respected. Otherwise, what will happen is you will get frustration. Sometimes the frustration comes from a knowledgeable position, oftentimes from a less well-informed position, but that is largely the consequence of the lack of information going downhill to the population. So I think that's something that needs to be rectified sooner rather than later. The consequences of that are serious. I also, though, would like to say that people are wanting to come to East Cleveland. If you check homes that come up for sale, especially in certain areas, and come off the market quickly, the homes are being bought up.
That's true.
And they're being bought up oftentimes by corporations, by developers acquiring land. East Cleveland is not a wasteland. It is prime real estate. It is the best 3.2 square miles available in the state of Ohio. So if, for those who are thinking about just leaving or supporting annexation, you'll be giving up something fundamental, something phenomenal. So hold on. Hopefully, the council will maintain its determination to keep our city independent and to hold the line and to promote that in your community. Hopefully, the residents will have a little bit more faith of what can be done within our borders irrespective of what outside entities are planning. This is a great city. We should hold on to it, keep it independent. Don't sell your home, don't move out.
I'm Amy Green. I'm not a resident of East Cleveland. I have elderly aunts and uncles that are not able to be here, and they are primary concern of mine. And being a pastor, all people are primary concern of mine. First, I would like to say about the grant money, all money is not good money. You know, there are some things, like, does this money provide contractors of this city with some contract jobs? Does it provide employment for the residents of East Cleveland and citizens? I mean, these are things that you can negotiate on. And I want to say, not just to council, but to everybody, running East Cleveland or any city, it's not just the government officials' job, it's your job too. You know, they can't fix it without you. You know, a big part, I think, with you talking about tax base, and that's what we need to be concerned about, a tax base, employment, starting business. In case you don't know, Ohio has a lot of grant money, startup money, for businesses. Now, some of you might not have access to it, but your council people do at your request. And so you can start up a business, but you need to find ways to bring income to East Cleveland. You own a house or you rent a house, you need to fix it up. Cut your grass, shovel your driveway, earn money. You know, you need to do the very basic thing to help yourself and to help, I mean, honestly, I walk around this place here, and I'm over here quite often, you know, because like I said, I have family over here. And it's so filthy, and people who live around here, you ought to pick up where you live at. Even if we ain't got no contractors or no, nobody hired to do that. You know, I don't care if you're the mayor, you know, or whether you're the pastor. If you walking by a trash or dirty floor, and your town is in distress, this is your home, you ought to clean it up. I clean up where I live at.
Absolutely.
You know, and sometime I come over here and clean up too. You know, so these are basic things that you have to do. And first, like, I see this thing happening, citizens speak after y'all get through. To me, that's too late. You need to be talking to them before you pass something.
Right.
Instead of after. But it ain't just on them, it's on you to stay informed as much as it is for them to inform you.
Absolutely.
It's up to the citizens. You both make your business to be informed too.
Time, Pastor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mamie Green. I am an East Cleveland resident, born and raised. Went away, came back after continuing my education. And I won't say that I am completely knowledgeable of the goings-on of the council people or how to run a city. So I won't speak too much on that, but I will speak on being a resident. And these people here, I, I, I just, my heart goes out to the people that I see every single day. I've come to a couple of meetings, and what I do right now is I'm, I'm observe, and I find out where my help can be needed or be used. But at the same time, I see some of the expressions on the faces of the people that sit up here, and it can be displeasing sometimes. These people have concerns. So if there are questions, they need to be answered. That is your job to answer their questions. So if there is something that they don't understand and make an effort to come here and ask those questions to get a better understanding, then I feel like they should be answered instead of frustration or annoyance being displayed. I think it's very important for us to understand what's going on in our city, and I think that the time to do so is limited. You guys got to figure something out, because we live here.
That's true.
We raise children here. I don't have children, but my nieces and nephews, they come to visit me, and I don't like for them to play outside. Like, and kids need to go outside. They need to be able to feel comfortable in any environment, they need to feel safe, and they shouldn't have to worry about some of the things that adults should be taking care of. So I think that, I think you get the picture about making sure y'all take care of y'all business where y'all come to this table. So that definitely needs to happen, and I think that you guys should do a much, much better job communicating with the public, because this is who you're doing it for. So we shouldn't be in the dark. And that's all I think.
Good work.
With reference to the resolution number 416, as I mentioned before, we had a very short time. We could have been in the dark, or we could have been done if we hadn't acted expeditiously. We got one phone call on Thursday, January 28th. That phone call was communicated to me from the police chief office. I got an email on, which I did not open until Thursday because I was in court all day, that this thing had to happen. So I immediately ran to the council office to beg and plead, it's not their fault, I'm the one, because I guess the federal government is going paperless, and so they don't want to send the packets. We used to receive huge packets. Last year, we received like 100 pages outlining all the details of the grant. This time, we got one phone call, and the police chief asked me to please do what I can to get this on the agenda. I went to the clerk on Friday, I called President Wheeler at that point, I also called Vice President King to try to get someone to please sponsor this legislation, because time was on the, of the essence. And if we could have done anything else, we would have done it. Because if you had been in my shoes, then I'm sure that each and every one of you would have done the same thing, hopefully, to work with what you had to try to make the city of East Cleveland have a grant that everybody else in County County has, with one phone call, with one day to get it on the agenda. This had to be on the agenda Monday. It had to be posted outside that glass cabinet. It had to be outside the front door. And we made that happen, because we're dedicated and we're committed to you guys not being left out of $400,000 or $500,000. Okay? And so that's why, if you want to call it an excuse, I call it being expeditious. And I think of being timely and working with the best that we could.
Come on, let's get professional.
With regard to the sewer district, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District won a Supreme Court, Ohio Supreme Court case, in which everybody in the county now will have its rates increased. Not just East Cleveland, but Beechwood, Bay Village, Berea, everybody's rates are going to go up, because there were lawsuits, and Beechwood was a part of it, North Royalton was a part of it, Strongsville was a part of it, in order to stop the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District from raising our rates. We lost. The citizens of Northeast Ohio lost. The citizens of Ohio lost. So now, we have to do the best we can to work with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. In fact, we were under an order by the Ohio EPA to stymie some of the sewage and contamination that was running from now Nine Mile Creek into Lake Erie. And so if we had not worked very closely with the Ohio EPA, they were going to order us and fine us millions of dollars, because they say that since 1956, we have been in dereliction of managing our own storm water as well as our sewer pipes. And that has been flowing straight into Lake Erie. East Cleveland was the cause of some of the contamination, supposedly according to the Ohio EPA, for Lake Erie. So the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District has arranged for us to develop a cooperation, a collaboration with us. They have certain storm water management systems in the city. And I'm under a directive, in fact, I have a deadline to complete a schedule for this city by Friday, February 5th. However, I want to postpone that, because we're meeting on February 9th, Tuesday, at 11:00 a.m., and I invite each and every one of you concerned citizens to come to that meeting with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District representatives, where we're going to discuss this, as well as what was earlier referred to as some of the easements that they want to purchase, buy, for, from this city, from our land bank property, in order to have right-of-way systems. So like I said, 9:00, February 9th, in council, in council room 215, in the conference room of 215, February 9th at 11:00 a.m., representatives from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District will be here. And at that point, I invite you to express your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to run out of line while the council is speaking, but if you all come to meetings often, the law director doesn't get that passionate, so I would say he's too passionate about it. If you want to find out something, that's the person to find out something for sure. Councilman Martin.
I'd like to speak briefly. Thank you for coming out. Last month, we celebrated Dr. King's birthday. This month is Black History Month. I was reflecting on your comments, and I thought about 1965, when Dr. King was responsible and had a lot to do with the Voting Rights Act. We're not millionaires, we're not billionaires. The only leverage we have is voting. And we've got to step that up. We can talk about the problems, the problems, we hope we can correct them, but we've got to vote. I'm going to push that consistently. Pastor, I enjoyed your comments, because it is a two-way street. We lack resources, but you step up, come to committee meetings, et cetera. What I was alluding to to my colleagues is that this kind of information, Joey, needs to be discussed in the committee, so when we come before the public, it flows better. Sometime, there's emergency, but perhaps we'll get there. I wanted to also point out that Paul Davis brought it up, but what we need and what we're lacking right now is the city engineers. Rick Catali was the last one who knows the technical stuff and know how to look at this stuff. We don't have one, because right now, we can't afford one. My concern about the sewer, and they've been out, people got robo-calls for the meeting they had at, at the library. This is a secret virus we're hearing about so much lately, and how that's going to impact us if this stuff goes through. Lastly, this morning, when I got up, there was a box of, and I want to shoot that at Mamie Green, it was a box of barbecue laying on the floor, I mean, on the, on the ground at Roseland, Sister Steel, at Roseland, and I just picked it up and took it to the, but I do on a regular basis. But we're the ones throwing this stuff out, just recklessly throwing stuff out. Okay? I know that, because we're the ones that's usually in this, in this city. So we have our part, and the pastor was, was alluding to that, that it's important and lasting. This is where we all come together, Joey, Brandon, all of us, Barbara, Wheeler. If we don't improve the tax base in the next few years, we will be annexed, and I'm totally against it. We've got to improve the tax base. We've got to get people to move in it. And you're right, we're jamming this 3.2 mile, we are. But we got to get them to come in. They want us to fall so they can take it over. Are you familiar with Harlem? Okay, well, we, a lot of countries used to be in Harlem, but we're not there now. They come in and they price out, and everything goes up. They should be doing economic, we need to be collaborating with University Circle, with Christian A and all them. We've got to do that. So help us, and in this month of Black History, say to yourself, what contribution can I make to make my city better, to make my family better? All the sacrifices of the Malcolm's and the Marx and our grandmothers and grandfathers to get us where we are, we could do better than what we're doing. So let it be written, so let it be told. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas.
You know, I've, I've heard the residents here, and I've heard the pastor, thank you for your comments. And I want to let you know, we got a church just about on every corner. Everybody should be saved. All these things should have, would have, could have happened. And when the young man said he had been here a long time, and he raised kids here, I did the same thing. And my hope was so high for my city, and my hope is still high. I looked at, I don't know how many of you watched the election, because I usually don't watch the election for candidates and all of that, on the other side, Republicans. But I watched it last night, and I was looking at Clinton, and I was looking at the other candidate. And it got so intense there. And I looked at how she was fighting with all the things that was going against her. And I saw how Trump and all the rest of them, and it was just automatic that Trump was going to win. But he didn't. He didn't. So what I'm saying, you can ask me, so what? But I'm saying that everybody from the, all these months, has been watching the things that Trump was doing, and assuming that because he had all these people coming in, that things were going to happen. Okay? That's not, it didn't happen. And like my colleagues were saying here, we had a service director, his name was Ross Brecatelli. Ross Brecatelli would get on the phone and call and call and send emails if he needed something for this city. But, but because of the fact that Ross, being an engineer, his muddies were in question. So they got rid of Ross Brecatelli.
Thank you.
Okay?
That's what they did.
Also, we're talking about people leaving, and the young man that I know well is saying the truth. People are buying houses. People are coming in here and getting these houses at a little, or nothing, and rehabbing them. Not only that, I had two residents in the row houses on Superior, right across the street on Melbourne, from Mount Nemo Baptist Church. She had left and bought a home on Garfield. But she came back, and she redid that house there. And she wants to live in East Cleveland and rent her house out. But she can't, because she called me and she stayed on my phone for 20 minutes. Oh yeah, my residents know my home phone number. They know my private cellphone number. Yes, she do, because she called me.
I got it.
Okay. Yes, she did. See, I didn't answer. But the point of the fact of the matter is that she wants to come back to East Cleveland. But she can't, because when she looks out that kitchen door, which faces the side of Melbourne, the house sitting there, it's all kinds of rubbish, it's all kinds of everything that's there, and we done tried several times to get that side boarded up. But being told that you don't have enough money for the wood to boat, to board it up. Again, down on Penrose, the Hunt family, she's about, she's been here over 50 years, and she's saying, I'm looking to move, but I can't move because my house is not sellable. Can't get anybody, because next to her is a vacant lot. Across the street, there's three burned-down houses that should have been torn down a long time ago, but it was. And all she's asking now is next door, there's a, a car parked in the driveway that she wants to be moved. I tried calling the chief of police, left a message at the mayor's office with Belinda. The car is still sitting there. These are the things that can happen. I'm saying to you, all of you, every one of us got problems, all of us got problems. And to come here, I think that this council looks to hear your concern. That's our responsibility, whether we can do anything about it or not, but we do want to hear what is going on. And talking about more communication, we do have, we put up a website, is it still up there? A website for the council.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Facebook, for the council. It's up there. And I don't know whether you all know about it or not, but it's up there. And a lot of people might not have Facebook connection, but you can do that. And I just got re-elected to War II. I'm proud to be a representative, and I'm proud to be a spokesman for War II and the community of East Cleveland. I just went up to Lake Park Towers Sunday and met with the people up in Lake Park Towers. They were doing voter registration up there. She asked me to come, I came. And I gave them my information, and I will be meeting with those individuals. I have a meeting, a monthly meeting that I have, that I didn't have last month, because it was so cold, and I wasn't going to ask the people to come out in the cold to here. But like you all are saying, the lack of communication is frustrating. It's very frustrating. I get frustrated, because I can't give you more information. But you do have my private cellphone, I'll give it again, 216-346-6227. I pay for that, not to say it. I've been had it ever since I've been a council person. My own cellphone, my residents know what my cellphone is. So I'm not trying to make excuses for anybody, but I could say that our residents in East Cleveland has been very tolerant. They have been patient. And I think it's a great thing for us to try to give more service when we can. Potholes, I would love to see something done, but when they put the asphalt or whatever it is that goes in those potholes, a couple of months later, that comes out of the potholes. So to wind this up, I'm not making excuses, not whining, not crying, but I am working. And if you call me, you'll get knocked. You just can't call me and leave a message and don't call me back and say I didn't answer. What I say on my phone is, call me and I will return your call as soon as my schedule permits, because I'm out there working my schedule for you all. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Councilwoman Graham.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody. It's a big turnout, the biggest that I've actually seen since the 2nd of January, and I think that's encouraging for us. I'd also like to say that I believe constructive criticism is a necessity, it's essential. There's nothing wrong with seeing a problem, addressing it, or bringing it out there so it can be addressed. All of us, it takes both sides. But you know, this is our third council meeting, and I'm sure if we keep going the route that we're trying to grow, more transparency, getting more information out there, having this reciprocal relationship with more attendance in the, in the council meetings, I, I'm looking for positive, positive outcomes. I'd also like to say too, you know, when we talk about information and being transparent, it's one thing to deal with only your own war, but as far as I'm concerned, East Cleveland as a whole, the entire city. So I want to put it out there that even though I am councillor of War IV, I'm going to be establishing a Facebook page, but I already have a phone number, I will give it out again. It's 216-755-4283. I encourage all existing organizations that want to work and want to have some type of collaborative that we can have together to see what we can do, almost like a citizens' brigade or, but that, that's not just for War IV residents. But I want, like Councilman Thomas said, we have been patient, all of us as citizens, dealing with different administrations, dealing with different councils, and it is going to take some time. Rome wasn't built in a day. And for us to be at the point that we are now, it didn't take it in one or two days for East Cleveland to be in the situation that it's in now. It took a long period of time for this to actually take place. So along with the constructive criticism, I would request that we try and stay focused and positive, and that, that's as well as the councillors. I mean, I can understand seeing the disarray earlier and how it looks, especially if you're outside of our city, in our city. But those are things in the different kinks that have to be worked out, and I would just ask for your patience in that matter, your cooperation, your positivity. I want each and every one of you, whoever would like to call me and talk about any issue that you may have, I'm open to that.
Number again?
It's 216-755-4283. And the easy way to remember that is that, you know, it's Ward Four, and you know, you're going down ninety, you see the sign, two-eight-three? Just got to remember it that way. But I encourage you to call because I'll keep a log of all the calls, all the voicemails, I'll respond to that day if I can. But I really believe that it takes us as East Clevelanders to really, we, you have groups over here doing things, you have groups over here doing, I would love to see some type of umbrella coalition where one group that focuses on, let's say, feeding the needy, and another group that works with kids, that we can all collaborate somehow and work together, like pieces of, pieces, pieces of parts, of parts of the body, you know, the hand can't function out without the arm, kind of thing. And I don't want to see it get to the point where we're separated, not even just by, you know, we can be separated by policy, but the thing is, is that that should be the only separation that we should have. We should all work together. And I really believe that we can. So I, like I said, I do appreciate the constructive criticism. I see that we have a lot of talent in this room, as far as I'm concerned, as far as voicing what they're saying and what they feel and letting that be known, because without that, we, people wouldn't be aware of it. I guess that's all I really have to say. I just really want us to strive for positivity and a lot of things that we say that we actually corroborated by our actions and not inaction, because it's very easy to sit back and discuss things. And also, I'm going to say this again, I say it time and time again, be cognitive of the source of your information. That's what I need to say. You know, not everything that's put in print is valid, not everything you hear is valid. Some of it may be, some of it may not be. So if anybody has any questions about anything, things that I may not be totally aware of, I'm open to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, a lot of new faces. Someone mentioned, and it's true, and I think we all know that we're operating the city on limited resources, financial and personnel. That being said, a lot of things to cover in the remarks from the public tonight, I would like to commend the law director for processing this piece of legislation as expeditiously as she did, Resolution Four- sixteen. It's not a new special-purpose grant, it's a special-purpose grant that has been awarded and the city has been a recipient of it for a number of years now. And the way it works, and we hear policy, we hear process and procedure, as part of that, you have to ask for it and then you get it. And then once you're allotted, they give you the amount, then the streets, information, what's being fixed, then it goes in. So it's not in here yet, we don't even have a total of what we're going to get. The other legislation that was on the agenda tonight, although it doesn't state it clearly in here, as many of you know, we've been to our last two, three meetings, maybe four meetings, we have discussed this certain truck, and it does say a certain inoperable service department vehicle. Now, it doesn't specify it in here, but actually in here, it does list the vehicle and the three bits are attached to it. You can see mine after the meeting if you need to. Hoop houses, please feel free to call me in regards to the hoop houses. I actually have an application and I'm trying to do a hoop house. Like Councilwoman Graham stated, if someone wants to know what a hoop house is, please see me after or call me, and I can tell you exactly what it is. As Councilwoman Graham mentioned, I would love, and we need to get everyone accurate information, because sometimes when people come here and you get two, three, four people stating that we're going to be taking sewage from Beechwood, I went to the meeting that was discussed last month, and a lot of people in the audience, oh, I want to go, what's the date, what's the time? And no one showed up. Not only was not that mentioned about Beechwood, it just doesn't seem possible to get sewage down here from Beechwood. Maybe you can, I don't know how you do that.
It's not sewage, right?
It's not sewage.
It's not sewage. Stormwater.
At any rate.
You have to work, you have to work.
At any rate, I would ask also that when you get up to speak, whether you have accurate information or not, hopefully you have accurate information, you call the council office before you come here, please refrain from using foul language and cursing at us. I don't think I did. We welcome your help. We welcome anyone's help who's willing to help us on behalf of you.
You got to help yourself.
Help the city. Again, thank you for coming out. That concludes.
Good evening, everybody. You know, being a council president, I'm not just involved in my ward, I'm involved in the day-to-day operations of the office, working with clerks, communicating with the governor's office about Upput Avenue, about the potholes, just numerous phone calls, letters, meetings, and everything isn't public yet, but you don't take a wine and just wave and everything changes overnight. But I've talked to probably, I've met with now probably five developers that want to come into the community, don't want nothing from the community, but they want to come and invest in our community. Some are retailers as well, which will create jobs. But I don't say all that because it's not time to say that yet. It still takes work. But while you're working and you try to show people the positive side of East Cleveland and what we have to offer, you know, if people say East Cleveland is a gold mine, it could be, but if you don't know how to mine gold, then what good is it to you? We got mines of gold, and you got folks out here that I would tell you, they say, I've seen your stuff on the internet, you all got toxic dumps coming in, you got this, that and the other, and the stuff that they're reading isn't even true. Some people out here who are not from the city, they live in the city, and sit up here and just go out and just spread rumors. And it makes no sense, I don't know what their purpose is behind it all. We have not sold any land yet to them, and if so, it's new to me. But it's gossip.
No, that's what they say.
They tell you something, ask your councilperson, I tell you they have it, and then they have it, we got some people issues that we need to address. Okay? But you come up here, but you come up here and you jump all over council, and councils, we're working diligently trying to get things done. I'm going to be council president, not even thirty days, really. We've got to be important. We've put some rules in place, we make, you know, you can get negative as you want. I'm going to stay positive, this is a great city, nobody's been in the city longer than I've been in the city, just as long as everybody else. So I'm not a copybagger coming in here trying to get over. It's not about that with me. Be it twelve votes, be it two votes, be it one vote, I won, I'm still here, and I'm going to fight for the city till the day I die. I was born in Cleveland. Let me tell you something, they put a name out there on Upput Avenue, I'm proud of, for my father, they named the street after him. I'm not going to sit up here and let them turn this city into a waste dump and my name is on it. It don't make no sense at all. So until my term is up in office, I will give everything I got for the city, I'll continue to fight for the city, and if you got a question, an issue, it's nothing. I came down to his place, you want to do something, talk to me, let's work together. Then you're coming no more. People come out and they, you know, if you want to work, I'm here, I'm in the city all every day. I don't get paid to be here every day, that's because I'm dedicated. So if you want somebody that's working hard, you want to know what's going on, come by the office, I'm there. You want copies of something, come by, I'm here, ten cent a page though.
Not for long.
Because the city can't give it away, we just don't have the money to do that anymore. So that's just the way I feel about it. So if you want to know any more information, come by the office, I'm here every day, and if not, I can be reached. Okay? I'm here for the people of the city. Those that love the city, I'm here to represent you, and those who don't even like it, I'm still here. Have a good evening. Motion.
I move that the meeting be adjourned.
So move it, that's second.
Move it second, all in favor?
Aight.
Aight, that means adjourned.